Good evening. It is Monday night, City Council, April 5th, a regular City Council meeting. Before we open with our official business, we do have a citizen here to speak to City Council about a fundraiser that's happening at the Chamber of Commerce. So I'm going to turn the time over first to Emmy Dennehy from the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, I want to start off by saying happy birthday to Tim. And then this chamber, we came up with the Golden Throne. And so for $25, you can bestow the Golden Throne to somebody. We'll deliver it. They'll get a crown and a sash, and we'll take a picture and put it on the e-blast. And there's a $10 removal fee. And then if they want to bestow it on somebody else, they pay $25, and we'll move the Golden Throne right along. So something for fun. I mean, 2020 was, it was fun. It was an experience. Shortage of toilet paper, so 2021, we thought we could bring in some fun. And so you can Golden Throne somebody. Just call the Chamber at 275-2331. So.
Thank you, Emmy. Can you repeat your phone number one more time?
275-2331.
All right.
What is the fundraiser for, Emmy?
It's the Chamber.
Okay.
Some general funds and some fun. Some community fun.
So, so it's $25 to put it somewhere, and it's $10 for them to get rid of it?
Yes.
Awesome. Can I already volunteer your first place for it to go?
You're a little late.
Oh, okay.
Tim Dennehy, today is Councilmember Tim Dennehy's birthday, and he was the first to get the Golden Throne. But you are definitely, go ahead and make some connections with Emmy. We can start passing it along.
We can set that up. Pass it right along.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. I have a whole, yeah, I'm already brewing a whole list. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. Happy birthday.
Thank you for sharing, Emmy, and happy birthday to Councilmember Tim Dennehy.
Happy birthday.
That's pretty staldard of you to be here tonight on your birthday.
No problem. Thanks.
And, and in consideration of your birthday, and that it's the March Madness final game in the tournament, I hope that we can move our meeting along at a good pace. With that, we will go ahead and start with a roll call, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Hockes?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. I'm going now, we will welcome a prayer and invocation by Joe Garkovich from Mercy Day Ministries. Let's rise, please.
Good evening. Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this day, another day in which to serve you. As we gather here this evening to do this important work, we hope that it's done in a timely fashion. We hope that it's done with all consideration for those who it affects. And we pray that you would bless this group of men and women who do this very important work all the time. And all these prayers, we send to you in Christ's name. Amen.
In a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council. We now have some items of citizens who also requested to speak to Council. And we'll go ahead and start with the order in which they received. And Ms. Kimberly Smith, you're welcome to come up.
Thank you for letting me have this time. This was probably a couple months overdue, but I am going to say it anyway. I just want to say thank you to all of you up there for what you have done for the small businesses in Canyon City. Since March of last year, while we have seen some pretty great challenges, along with a lot of heartbreaks and a lot of tears, we've also seen a lot of successes. It's, it's natural for humans to react, to stand up and fight when we're presented with obstacles and forces beyond our control. And it threatens our livelihood. We only want to protect what we've worked hard for and still serve our customers to the best of our abilities in the most difficult situations. We have faced, and we are still facing, a lot of challenges relating to COVID. Yet small businesses are resilient. And because our whole heart is in our business, our small business is our life, and we treat it like our children. We want to protect it. We want it to grow, and we want it to serve our community. You and the entire city of Canyon City's government has helped your small businesses navigate through this. It's not over yet, but I do believe you all deserve a great deal of praise and appreciation for the work that you've done to protect our city and our small businesses. Sometimes we all just need a sincere grateful thank you. And this is just my simple way of saying that to all of you that serves on City Council. And also for everyone that serves behind the scenes, because I know there's a lot more that do a lot of hard work. So you'll never know how much your assistance and encouragement has meant to a lot of small businesses in our community. And for that, I just want to say thank you very much.
Could we get your name, ma'am? Could we get your name and the business that you represent?
Kimberly Smith, First Stitches Quilt Shop.
Okay.
Thank you, Kim. It really means a lot that you came in person to say that. And we appreciate that. And we're really proud of our staff. And glad to have you in our community. Now, we'll turn the time over to Doug Ray.
Thank you. First, happy birthday to you, Tim. When I was talking to you earlier, I had no idea it was your birthday. No idea. Thanks. And I know speaker for so many people, I certainly miss seeing Jim Meisner up there. This is the first time I've been here. But we'll just leave that one alone. So about a little over six and a half years ago, I got to town. And one of the first things I did was I reached out to everyone, and I said, I need your help. Well, I've never needed your help more than I need it right now. There is a current bill that just passed the House, and it is now in the Senate. And for any animal lovers in Canyon City, this is a really, really bad bill. I spoke, I went up to Denver, and I testified in person against this bill. And unfortunately, we lost 10 to 1. We lost in a big time. We had to bring in a lobbyist, something I had really no idea about. And when it went for a full House vote, we lost like 43 to 21. It went across party lines. All the Republicans voted no, which is what we wanted. Now the Democrats voted yes. It is now in the Ag Committee in the Senate. And we are working our best. It's only, there's only five people. And we're working our best to try to swing one person over to a no, so, so we can kill it before it goes into the full Senate. The reason I'm here tonight is I'm looking for the support of the city of Canyon City here. We have, I have a bunch of packets I can hand out when I'm done talking, because I don't want to do it right now and take up all the time. But we have right now 50 pack licenses opposing this bill in Colorado. A total of 70 different organizations. And there's, I'm sorry, there's towns on this, this opposition. And it would be nice if I could be able to put my town on there as well, and say the city of Canyon City opposes this. I'll give you guys a lot of information. I'm not asking for yes or no right now. I give you a lot of information. I'll give you a copy of the bill. I'll give you a copy of all of the, the organizations that are against it. Again, there's 70. And I even give you a copy of my Senate testimony. The only thing I'll ask is, if I give that out to you, this isn't going to go on public record, is it? You know, like, people aren't going to be able to see this online tomorrow?
It, it will be a public record. I don't think we'll be posting it online. But if someone asks for it, they would be, they would be able to have access.
Well, I just don't want the other side to see my testimony before I give it from the Senate. That's, but I'll give it to you all folks, so you can read it. Because if you just read my testimony, then you know exactly what this bill's about. It's just a really, really bad bill. And it does two things. One, it's going to prevent me from saving the same animals I've been saving for the past six and a half years. And it's going to permit the larger shelters in Colorado to kill the same animals that we're saving down here. So let's say an animal comes in, and it's a very scared animal. That, that animal, according to this bill, would not consider it safe. So the bigger shelters up north, they would be, I'm blinking. But give me one second. They, they would, they would have, they would have a law now that says we can kill these animals. Right now, there's no law that says that. And on the other side, if, if, let's just say, John, you know, you have a dog, and you surrender a dog tomorrow, and you, let's say you have a little chihuahua. And let's say, I don't know, it bits, I don't know, somebody walking into your house, that got scared. That dog would be considered unsafe. And if you had to ever surrender that dog to the shelter, I can't transfer it out. I would have to euthanize that dog. So it's two gigantic things that are happening here. And no matter, when you read the bill, you're going to see this is a perfect bill on paper. It is just a great bill. It talks about saving all the healthy and all the safe animals. That's just not what's happening here. So again, you know, when I'm done, I'll just walk around and give everybody a packet here. And, you know, if you guys could get together and maybe talk about, you know, getting the, the city of Canyon City, that would be a pretty powerful statement to put on our opposition bill, that the city of Canyon City opposes this bill.
Thank you, Doug. Are there any questions for Doug? And Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, Doug, the, we know that the legislature is moving at somewhat warp speed right now.
Yes.
Is there, is there a, is there timing on this? I mean?
Well, we, every, every night, we have a, a meeting with our lobbyists and the other groups that are, well, not the other groups. It's the humane side of Fremont County, Max Fund, and No Kill Colorado, the three biggest groups in our lobbyists. And we just found out tonight, the Ag Committee meets every Wednesday and Thursday at 1:00 PM. We just found out tonight that it is not on the schedule for next week. So it's definitely not going to be heard next week. It might be on the schedule for the following week. We just don't know until the Monday of the previous week. But you're right, this thing busted through the House like that. I mean, it just went, it sailed right through. There was no time to do anything. And I'm afraid it's probably going to do the same thing at the Senate.
And Councilmember Gonzalez?
I actually just read the answer to my question. You had said that an animal might not be safe, or it's not a safe animal. And I wondered what constituted that. But it says, behavior that's likely to result in bodily injury or death to another animal or human being. Does that mean only when it's in the shelter?
No, that is, nothing is defined in here. They say in this bill that they want to save all healthy and safe animals. They're forgetting the entire treatable, treatable. There's a lot of treatable animals, treatable behavior.
Sure.
If, if an animal comes in, for whatever reason, and it's just scared, it's just scared out of its mind, it's going to show us that it's scared, it's going to, it might, it might tremble in its kennel, it might growl at us, you know, it might show its teeth. Those animals would be considered unsafe. And let's just say I was to adopt one of those animals out, I'd be breaking the law. And the state could actually shut the shelter down.
So my question is, let's say my dog is picked up six blocks from here, and she's taken in, and she's scared.
Yep.
And I don't get there in time. I'm on vacation or whatever. I don't get there in time. Does that mean that she might be put down?
Well, I'll tell you right now, there's no way that I'm putting down an animal that I can save, that I've saved.
According to this bill. I'm sorry.
According to this bill, yes. I mean, I won't. I'm going to get myself in an awful lot of hot water if this bill goes through, because there's just no way I'm going to euthanize a dog like that. We've been saving these animals for six and a half years. And there's no reason for us to change. But by doing that, I'm putting the shelter, you know,
Sure.
a significant liability. So I'll do my very best to get around the bill. And there's going to be, there's, I've already talked to some shelter managers across the country, and there's going to be a lot of people that are not being honest. And, you know, not being as transparent as, as they should be. So let's say we get a dog in that's, or these, these groups that I'm talking to, let's say they get a dog in that's just not safe, as you will. This animal might go missing. You know, versus right now, we get an animal that's not safe, you know, we, we intake it, you know, we adopt it, we rescue it, we send it, we transfer, we do whatever we do. And there's a record for it. This, this bill is bad on so many levels. It's just, it's unfortunate that the bigger shelters that made, you know, millions and millions of dollars every year trying to push this down the small shelter's throat like ours up in Canyon.
One more question. I'm sorry. What was the reason for, for writing this bill?
This is a direct tack on, on the No Kill movement. There's, there's just no doubt about it. You know, Colorado is this close to being the first No Kill state in the entire country, this close, right, like 90, 90% overall. And we could be there. But there's a lot of groups like, I won't say their names, but they're up, they're up in Denver, and they don't like the No Kill movement at all. They want to do something called social condescending sheltering. That's what this bill is, social conscious sheltering. It's, they have their way of saving lives, we have ours. You know, I was saying to Ryan prior to this meeting, through March, we have a 99.21% save rate, which means we've saved almost every animal that's come in this building for the first three months. And that's only because we're saving the very treatable animals, treatable medical. Let's say, you know, Dolly, you have a dog that's, I don't know, you can't, this, okay, not you, this really happened. A woman came in, she had cancer, she couldn't take care of her dog anymore. She brought the dog in to surrender, or somebody brought the dog in. The dog was full of cancer. What we normally do in case like this, we'll send the dog to something called hospice. There's a lot of hospice organizations where the dog will live out its life in hospice. Now, I can't transfer that dog because it's not considered healthy. So it's just, it's just a bad bill all the way around.
And Mayor Pro Tim?
I would, I would just point out that the "safe" means that a dog or cat has not exhibited behavior that is likely to result in bodily injury or death to another animal or human being. That, every, no cat can pass that test if they have claws.
Sure. Yeah.
I mean, cats eat birds, you know? There you go. There's death to another animal.
Sure.
Or bodily injury. And so there's no cat that can pass this test.
Well, I'm going to testify that 5 to 10% of all the animals that come to the shelter are scared. Whether it's a cat or dog, it's typically a dog. But they're scared. And those are the animals we're saving right now. And that's why we're able to save down here 97% every year. Right now, we're at 99, versus the ones up north, we're only able to save 90, because they're killing those animals right now. And they're, they're catching Holy Hell for it. This bill gives them the right to kill those animals, because they're going to say it's the law. We have to kill them.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
I would just recommend, Doug, that you, that when you go up there, that you, the real problem is what, how they define "safe," as I see it with this bill. And so I would recommend that you take up language with you, that amending what they have here is "safe," because it is, it is, you know, not logical on its face at all.
We, we tried, John. We had a Zoom meeting with one of the bill sponsors and all of the large shelters. And we said, if you can change the word "safe" to "treatable," we're in. Healthy and treatable. They wouldn't do it. They just wouldn't move at all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Just one more question. So after we reviewed this, you said you're looking for support. What kind of support are you looking for?
Just your logo to put on, to put on here with the other 70 organizations. That's it. That's, that's all we're looking for. And I think that would be pretty powerful. We put it right at the top to say, the city of Canyon City, you know, opposes this bill.
I think it's fair to give us some time to, to review it.
Oh, you bet. Yeah, you bet.
And take a look at it. And then, I don't know, can we set a date?
Wednesday, we are meeting again. Does that give us enough time to?
Well.
Because I think we'd have to do a vote of the people to, or vote of the council members to put our name behind something.
Yeah. Well, I'm just like, like John and I were saying, you know, this, this won't be seen at all this week, but it might be next week. So we're just trying to get, we update this every day, and we're just trying to get in front of the, the committee members right now.
Okay. So maybe, Cindy, if we could post it and put it on our agenda for Wednesday, that we could have just a few minutes to talk.
Could we do that on a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, you would have a special council meeting, and it would be an action item on the agenda. And then you could go into your general government meeting.
Sounds good. Is that something that the council wants to have a discussion about?
Yeah, I think so.
Do I start at, right at 5:00, or am I starting at 4:00?
We need to start at by 5:00, because we have council people that work, and it'll, it'll be hard enough for them to get it here by 5:00. Okay. All right. We'll be, if you want to, you're welcome to attend again on Wednesday at 5:00. We may have more questions.
Okay.
If not, we, I'm pretty sure we all know how to get ahold of you.
I'll be here Wednesday at 5:00.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, guys. Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you, Doug.
Bye-bye.
And it's now time for council member announcements. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to remind everyone that our general government meeting is this Wednesday at 5:00. And now will be the Cats and Dogs meeting, too. And we also have a URA meeting following the general government meeting, and it starts at 6:00. And Wednesday, we have our monthly KRLN interview.
Yes, if anyone would like to make that, that would be wonderful. Councilmember Gonzalez?
I was just looking up the information, but I wanted to remind the public that we were having a community-wide cleanup. I wanted to ask if we still had vouchers available, or is it on a voucher?
So the city is doing a dumpster cleanup, and that's April 9. And we'll also be doing, we're partnering with a company that will be doing e-recycling for electronics during the same time. And that will be happening at First and Royal Gorge Boulevard in the old Constantino's lot.
And it's not on voucher? It's first come, first served?
We have dumps, dumpsters there. So they'll just be dumping into the dumpsters. The county's running a voucher program this year.
Oh, okay. But I recall that there's no TVs and no tires, no paint.
Yeah, so no TV, or no tires, no paint. You can bring your TVs for the e-recycling. There's a $25 charge to take the TV.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
And Councilmember Reed?
So I just wanted to publicly thank everybody that was on the Blossom Committee that has been so incredibly flexible in the fact that we get to have Blossom. I'm so excited. Like, my heart needed to have Blossom Festival this year. And so I just wanted to thank everybody who's on that committee and who has been championing for us to be able to have Blossom Festival this year, to be able to have a real parade, and be able to have a craft fair, and to just be able to be outside together and celebrate. After everything that we have been through this past year, I just am so looking forward to it. So if you're on that committee, thank you so very much for all of the effort and flexibility, because I know it has been a challenge, so.
All right. Thank you, council members. If we don't have any more announcements, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Ryan Stevens?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. The item 7A is to approve the minutes for the regular City Council meeting on March 15, the Vision Committee meeting on March 17, and the special City Council meeting with Planning Commission on March 20, as well as the City Council retreat on March 11. 7B authorizes the city clerk to solicit interested parties to fill an at-large City Council position. 7C awards bid 2221 the American Water Infrastructure Act to Municipal H2O in an amount not to exceed $27,825. 7D awards bid 2421 Canyon City 2A for 2021, North, North 10th Street and North 11th Street to Avalanche Excavating in an amount not to, an amount of $495,805, with a 10% contingency of $49,580.50, for a total not to exceed $545,385.50. 7E awards bid 2521 State Highway 115 pedestrian improvement. This is CDOT Project 22445 to Avalanche Excavating in an amounts of $609,981.90, with a contingency of $60,998.19. And city-directed materials testing construction management in the amount of $19,019.91, for a total not to exceed amount of $690,000. 7F awards bid 2721 Toral Commercial Turf Mower to LL Johnson Distributing of Denver in an amount not to exceed $15,245. 7G awards bid 2821 irrigation equipment to CPS distributors of Colorado Springs in an amount not to exceed $10,000. 7H awards bid 3021 Kawasaki UTV to Fremont Motorsport of Florence in an amount not to exceed $10,701.20. 7I ratifies the city administrator's signature on the HR Green contract. And 7J is to receive and file a list of bills.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Just a few questions. Just out of curiosity, are we talking 7H? Are we talking 9th Street?
I'm sorry, 7H is for the Kawasaki UTV?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I wrote it down wrong. 7E?
Yes. So this would be 9th Streets from RGB South.
All the way up?
It would be, yeah, it'd be connecting the, yeah, connecting to the existing sidewalk network.
Okay. And then, oh, go ahead.
Oh, so there's a lot of those areas that don't have any sidewalk at all. So we'll be putting a new sidewalk there.
When is that going to get started?
Our whole, our hope is to start in the fall after Labor Day. Oh, no, I'm sorry. That's a different project. Or this one would actually start the, we'd start scheduling the pre-construction meeting after it's awarded. So it would start soon.
All right. And then, about the turf mower, I guess that's F. I have my, my stuff labeled incorrectly. What are we using now for the mower? Do we have, we have a big mower, don't we?
Yeah, we, we have other turf mowers. This, this would be a replacement for one of our mowers that has outused its life.
Okay. And then I just, this one, I'm curious about, this document was notarized in California on 7I?
That's the HR, HR Green contract?
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're headquartered out of California.
Okay. And then on the list of expenses, hold on, I want to look at, I'll come back to that.
All right. We'll move over to Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick, then.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A comment on the notice for the City Council person. It says, as the current City Council wishes to move the community forward, they seek a progressive individual who is willing to contribute, et cetera. I would recommend that, that we not use a politically loaded term like "progressive," but "committed" might be a better term.
We had already changed it. I apologize. I didn't, after we discussed it, I forgot this was the memo part we did change up.
But that has been changed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a question on our cash disbursement. But we've got a pretty hefty health insurance claim amount on there, $240,000, $241,000. Is, is that, is that a quarterly payment? Or is that a result of claims? Or is that a, an insurance payment?
This, it says claims, so that, that would be payments for, for claims through the self-insurance company.
So we've had $240,000 in health insurance claims during what period?
Yeah, I would have to go back and take a look and see if that is monthly or quarterly for you.
Okay. Would, would, maybe you could give us a little bit more detail on that, if you would, please. That's, that's quite a pretty hefty payment. And it's good to know whether our medical insurance is functioning as desired or not.
Councilmember Hockes?
Yeah, also, I'm looking at.
Will you turn your microphone on?
For, I'm looking at legal services. $607. I don't recognize the, the individuals that are mentioned for that.
Yeah, Casa, or Crassa and Miller is the water attorney. So that, that's the water attorney of record for, for the water department.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from council? I did have a question on when the 2-way projects will be scheduled to start construction.
Yeah, well, again, we'll schedule pre-construction meetings after the awards have, have been made. So they'll, they'll be going on this summer. So the last, from the last City Council meeting, those pre-construction meetings are scheduled for next week, from, for that award. We're probably about two weeks out for scheduling the next pre-construction meeting for, for the next, for these projects.
Will there be any more bids coming forward for 2021 Streets?
We're working on those next. Yeah. We're still waiting on a couple of final designs for, based on the priority list.
Okay. And Councilmember Gonzalez, did you have, find what you needed?
I need, I just want to ask about the confidential funds.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't want to ask what they were for, but I don't know how to ask this question. I don't, I don't want to ask what they were for, but I don't know how to ask this question.
So, the confidential funds go to the PD for, for running confidential activities.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
I don't know that I answered much there.
We normally never, ever, ever do anything confidential.
No.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so then I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Brandon Smith.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Spend a motion and a second, any discussion? We'll call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Aye.
Thank you, council. We'll move on now to the administrators' report.
All right, in addition to the written reports, just a couple of other items. Our Public Works Director position closes this week, so we're waiting to see a number of applicants and moving forward with that process. You know, we'll, we'll be looking at the number of applicants and scheduling interviews for qualified applicants after that, hopefully next week or early the week after. We're also tentatively looking at scheduling a ribbon cutting for Point Alta Vista. We had originally planned on doing this last year, but because of COVID, we, this was put on the back burner. So, we're looking at doing that the weekend of May 8th. So, that's tentatively scheduled for, for that weekend.
Which weekend in May?
It would be May 8th, the weekend after Blossom. And as, as we get more details on that and firm up that date, I'll let you know. And I'm happy to take any questions regarding the written report that's in your binder.
Councilmember Smith.
As far as the.
As far as the interviews for Public Works Director, is that going to run similar to how we did PD?
It would be, it would be similar in that we'll, we'll be running, you know, multiple group interviews, panel interviews. But, you know, in the PD, Public Works, we, we did that with council member involvements. For this one, that, that was not planned. It would be group interviews with the departments that'd be working directly with that individual and then interviews with, with me and maybe even an in-tray exercise of some kind.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, two questions. The library received a check. Was that, was that a grant? Was that an endowment? Do you know exactly what the form of those funds were?
Those were proceeds left in somebody's will.
Yeah.
So, is it, is it just to be spent any way the library determines or?
Yeah, I will need a check with Suzanne to see if there were any specific instructions from the executor. But when I met with her last week, it was last week or the week before, there, there was not any indication at that point.
Will you be working with her to earmark those funds for whatever purposes are appropriate?
Yeah, we, we will be.
It'd be nice if it was something that was lasting in his honor, yeah.
And I also have another question. Under the water department, it said that there was two service lines damaged by Atmos energy because of a missed locate. Was that our miss or their miss?
That was our miss.
That was our miss?
Yes.
Was that, was that because of inadequate construction, as-built drawings or, or do you know?
Actually, Bob's here. Bob, do you mind coming up to answer a couple of questions?
As Bob's coming up, the, the, I just wanted to point out that, that I do, I do have some trepidation about the accuracy of our as-built drawings in the city and would like to know the exactly, at least if that was a root cause there or not.
Morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Council.
Good evening.
Yeah, the, the leaks occurred over in the 1100 Block of Macon. The initial strike was on a three-quarter inch copper service line by Atmos, just misjudged the depth of it and hooked it a little bit, so we had to go out and perform a, ran enough water to make their hole muddy for them. The second one occurred actually kind of right next to it. What it looked like happened is the locate, the service line actually went around a tree. Tree that had gotten big over the years and stuff and, and with the gas line in there as well, there was a little bit of probably some interference going on and he was probably hooked on to the other service line and tried to get in continuity through and back to this one and, yeah, he just missed his locate by about four feet. We really don't have detailed as-bills as far as where those service lines go. However, in our GIS database, we do have all of those shot in with GPS, so. But in this case, like I say, it just, it was a, it was a muddy mess, bunch of tree roots and couldn't quite feel what they were, when they're running the equipment, feeling what they were digging into and got into the second one.
Thank you, Bob.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions about the administrators' report? Then I'm going to move on to item number nine and this is item A. We will be voting in three different consecutive motions. We'll start with 9A-I and that's the introduction and adoption by title only, a resolution nine series of 2021 entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of Canyon City, Colorado Approving the Purchase and Sell Agreement with David P. and Lynette C. Frank for the property located in unincorporated Fremont County Canyon City, Colorado." I'm going to turn the time over to Administrator Ryan Stevens.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This, this property purchase was one that we discussed in an executive session a month or so ago. It is just south of Poplar over by the cemetery, Lakeside Cemetery. And what we're looking to do here is purchase this property for future cemetery use. Right now, where the Public Works facility is over on Ninth Street, that is all land that is owned by the cemetery and is currently contemplated for future cemetery development, which with buildings on it, that would mean at some point we would have to relocate the Public Works Department. Our plan here is to purchase this property and then do a land swap internally with the city, so the future cemetery would be built on this land that we're purchasing and the Public Works can stay where it's at for future build-outs of additional Public Works facilities, including the relocation of the Parks Department and maintenance facilities to this site, moving them from Centennial Park. So, what we're looking at here is a one-time payment of $70,000 for the land. We'll also waive the tap fee for three-quarter inch single-family residents and then the city will be, also waive the cost of the meter, the meter pit and we'll do that installation. We're also paying the, the closing costs and fees for this particular development. We're buying a 14-acre parcel and I'd be happy to take any other questions at this time.
Catherine, I wanted to make a confirmation on my thing. It says that we're voting on, you know, one, two, and three, we only need one vote?
Yeah, so when you approve the resolution, you're going to be approving the purchase and sale and the water service agreement.
And the water service. Only one vote will be needed, so we'll need to talk about all three during this discussion. All right, thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
A quick question on the very last bullet on the summary page. It says, "Staff has also been working with Fremont County Planning and Zoning Department to create a 14-acre parcel that would be transferred to the city." When will we know? Is there a timeline for that yet?
Yeah, Bob's been working very closely with Planning and Zoning. It's an administrative approval.
Oh, okay.
So, it, it doesn't have to go through P and Z at, you know, the Planning Commission at, at the county level.
So, then what happens if they don't go through with this?
Yeah, all of our, all of our discussions have indicated that it's in line with the current county plans and should be approved.
Okay.
But to answer your question, if they don't, if for some reason they don't approve it, then we won't be purchasing the property. We'll have to go back.
So, all of this is off the table? Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ryan, I just have a question on this because do we have a, an estimate of roughly what the total cost will be? Because it's, it's broken down, but we don't have anything as far as what the water department, you know, roughly what that's going to cost to install all this and move everything. Everything else has got a price laid out on it and then the taxes obviously and the closing fees, or, excuse me, the closing costs and fees aren't on there, but I didn't know if there was any.
Yeah, the labor to do the installation is pretty nominal.
Okay.
You know, that's stuff that the water department does on a daily basis, so it's, it's just a matter of going in there and, and putting it in. It's, Bob, do you have any estimate on what that might cost?
And the closing costs, as you probably know.
I couldn't hear that and I'm sure Mandy could.
The closing cost is.
Yeah, so he's running, he's running the numbers. He's going to give me an answer here in just a moment.
Oh, okay.
So, closing costs are usually a percentage of the purchase price, so, and I don't know what that is exactly, but yeah, but they're responsible for the taxes up to the point of closing.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Has there been a Phase One environmental assessment conducted on this property?
We have not conducted a Phase One on it, no.
Do, does the city have a policy about environmental assessments in acquired property?
Not that I'm specifically aware of.
I, the, I have personal knowledge of this property and I do not know of any particular blemishes that, that might be out there. It is adjacent to now Colorado legacy land property. I understand there was an oil well on that property if I remember correctly and the, my, my memory is not, I wouldn't vouch for that right now, but the, I, I just have, I have a concern about the city acquiring property without, without conducting a Phase One environmental assessment because of potential liabilities. Like I say, I do not know of any liabilities attached, attached to this property, but it, it might be wise for us to examine the lack of a policy there and establish something.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick, are you suggesting that we might need to look a little bit further into this property or make it a contingent on the sale?
I, the, I would, I would leave that up to the administrator, to the city administrator as to whether that would be, whether that would be appropriate. But, but I think it is something that, that, that should be addressed globally, if not specifically here on this property.
Catherine, do you have any recommendations?
Sorry, it, it's completely up to you all. If you would like to modify the agreement to allow for that Phase One, you can. We do have during the due diligence period, the right to go on the property and do some initial inspections. If those come back unsatisfactory, we can, you know, ask the sellers to, you know, delay closing and we can come in and say we're going to do a Phase One. I have no idea how they'll react to that, but you could do it that way on this contract and then we can always develop a policy as Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick said.
And that, and that's typically, you know, during, during that due diligence, you know, phase is when we typically conduct those types of activities.
So, you've been notified about some due diligence that might need to occur. It'd be nice to have some answers in that regard. Councilmember Reed.
So, I just kind of have a question on that, John. For what we're talking about using it for, can you help me understand what kind of liabilities or issues there could be because we're not building or, I mean, I understand what you're saying for future purchases, but I mean, in this particular one, is that something that you feel like we need to be concerned with considering what we're talking about using it for? Or is it something that you're just concerned about going forward for other purchases?
Councilmember, Councilwoman Reed, the, during my career, I worked for several different companies. Those companies literally spent hundreds of millions of dollars on environmental cleanup and because of that, I'm somewhat sensitized to acquiring land without at least, you know, conducting a cursory review of environmental conditions. This land is a downgrade and somewhat downstream from the Cotter property. Like I say, I, I do not know of any issues and have actually directed measurements that be made out on that property for various reasons and, but, but it's, it's just a general, a general idea that it's a good idea to evaluate environmental conditions before putting yourself on the chain of title. Once you're on the chain of title, you open yourself up to liability from different environmental laws that, that may come into effect. And so, that's, that, that's in general, that's not specific to this property.
No, I appreciate, I never honestly would have even thought of it, so I appreciated the idea.
Councilmember Hockes.
And we're still talking about the same thing here. I don't recall when this first came up for the purchasing of this property. And I don't remember if John was here when we had that meeting, but I'm saying that, that's why it does us due diligence to look at what we're doing. And if John was here at the last meeting when we talked about this, it would have been nice if he brought that subject up at that time. This way, we wouldn't be dealing with the situation that we're talking about at the present time. So, it behooves us to really look at what we're doing. I don't know anything about the stuff that he's talking about because I know, you know, his background and everything else and I don't question that. But I'm just saying, if something, if someone has knowledge about some of the things that we're looking at with council to bring up down the road for our final vote, that's the time that we need to bring those subjects up. And this way, we're not at this point that we are right now. So, if there's any way we, we can do whatever we need to do to satisfy everybody's concerns and they are good concerns, let's go ahead and do it now and let's get it resolved so we, we can get this subject taken care of completely at one point or another, okay? Thank you.
All right, is there any more discussion?
Would that mean that we would need to table this until, no, we could move forward and put a contingency on it?
Looks like, Bob, if you don't mind coming to the microphone and taking your mask off while you speak to us, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, we had talked about whether or not that that would be a concern. In speaking with Mr. Frank, he mentioned to me that there was nothing disclosed to him during his property purchase of the entire 120 acres that would lead him to believe that there was some type of concerns, issues with the site, given its proximity to the former Cotter Mill. I, I do know that there's a couple of water wells on the property. I can't say I've ever seen any type of oil pumping type of equipment, but I know that there's a couple of water wells there, the Renfro Wells, I believe they're called, and he's looking at getting an augmentation plan to be able to use that water to irrigate the balance of his property. He wants to grow a alfalfa hay mix. So, I, I guess I say that, I'm sure that's probably not a definitive answer, like we've been told that, no, there are no concerns, but certainly none were disclosed to him when, in our discussions with him.
Yeah, and just to go back to the contract, both items 6A and 6B, so 6A, if there are any environmental reports that he has in his possession, he's supposed to share those with the city and 6B allows us to look for hazardous or toxic conditions on the property as well. So, the, I mean, the, from a due diligence standpoint, again, we, we have the language in the contract to, to allow us to get on to the property and that, that's, should be what we need in order to do Phase One.
Thank you for that. Did you have any cost estimates on the water tap? Did you have any cost estimates on the water tap?
I was going to say a three-man crew estimate maybe five hours to do the work, right around twenty-three hundred dollars. And, but that won't include, I'd have to give a calculation for the patch repair on the county street.
Satisfied? Oh, Councilmember Dennehy?
I just have one more que, you know, and this might be something to look into just as you're doing your due diligence. I know that when it was Cotter, they, they went out and tested all the wells in that Upper Lincoln Park area. And then that might be something that's on there, on legacies where they have that. Just something, and I can even question the guy who did all that testing, because I, I know him. But that's, that's just something, all those wells in that area have been tested.
Yeah, and there, there isn't a well on this property. So the, the well is actually, Mr. Frank is retaining the property that has the well on it.
So it's the, the potential oil pump, that alleged oil.
The, the well that I think I remember.
Yeah.
Was drilled for exploration purposes and was a dry well. To the best of my knowledge, would be easily converted into a water well if owner so desired.
Okay. Good to know.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did. Twenty-three hundred for five hours.
Yeah, a three-man crew, I think about twenty-three hundred dollars. So there's seventy thousand, another seventy-seven thousand. So almost about eighty thousand for the fourteen acres. Which again, I mean, I don't know if it's an opportunity like this would come up again. Because as Ryan stated, our public workshops, the equipment repair, the fuel station, the bulk water stations, all of that are on cemetery property today.
Well, it's just such a natural flow to have the cemetery just go south from where it already is. Councilmember Reed?
I mean, I think it makes sense from a stewardship perspective. I mean, the amount of money that it would cost is if we actually had to move all of Public Works would be atrocious for something that's so simple. And it does make sense with where it's at in relation to the cemetery currently. So, I mean, it seems like the most logical explanation for us to be able to move forward. It is kind of amazing that the opportunity was even there in the first place, because that would have been quite the conversation. Had we not had this opportunity to try to be talking about moving Public Works. So we don't have to do that.
And this is a very forward-thinking move, because the cemetery probably won't reach its full build-out for another eight to ten years. But again, we're, we're trying to think forward and anticipate the next steps.
It will happen fast.
It's going to happen fast? Because eight to ten years does happen fast, doesn't it? Yeah. Yes, thank you. If there are no more questions, I would like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Smith?
Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve Resolution Nine, series of 2021. Second.
Spend a motion and a second, any discussion? We'll call the vote, please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council. And thank you, staff, for your work on this project. We'll now move to item nine B. This is introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance Eleven, series of 2021, entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending the Canyon City Municipal Code by the Addition of a New Chapter 1.14 with Title I Regarding Municipal Campaign Finance Complaints." I'll turn the time over to our attorney, Catherine Sellers.
Thank you. So as Mayor, council, you'll remember, we discussed this at a previous, I believe, general government meeting. There have been some changes at the Secretary of State's office and they, and in the law, and they will no longer be handling municipal finance complaints. So this is only related to finance. Other election complaints will be handled by the city clerk as they are now, so that there's no change there. Through this ordinance, we are adopting basically the process that the state uses for finance complaints. So we're not creating a new process or anything like that. So this is in order for there to be a place for those complaints to go. Otherwise, we wouldn't have a means of handling them. And we don't want to be reacting to those complaints. Would much rather have it in place by the time your election comes up in November.
So basically, we are aligning our code with the state legislature and the laws that have been passed?
Yep.
Any questions by the council? I'd like to entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we approve introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance Eleven, series 2021.
Second.
A motion and a second have been made, any discussion? Call the vote. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
The motion passes, thank you, council. We are now on item number 10, and that is to go into executive session. It appears that Mayor Pro Tim has the blue bag, so we'll turn it over to you.
Madam Mayor, I move that the city council enter into executive sessions for the following purposes. An executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Develop a strategy for negotiations and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024E concerning the Holiday Inn Express.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second, any discussion? We'll call the vote to go into executive session. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes, we will go into executive session.